Welcome. This is the second regular City Commissioner meeting at the M D City Commission of the September 22nd, 2029, 7:00 p.m. And, uh, once again, socially distanced. Uh, this time off holiday order. I hope you felt welcome tonight by our Finance Director, Helen Dwyer, Assistant Finance Director, Chris Wild, who served as our leader this evening. And I'd like to introduce the staff that are sitting up in front of you and down in front. To my right or left is Recording Secretary Taylor Lottard. Uh, down in front is Acting City Clerk Andy Hox. We have Acting, uh, City Attorney for tonight, Deputy City Attorney Anna Margert. And, um, then next to her is Commissioner Dwight Selby from Zone 1.
Good evening.
And Anna Margert. I apologize if we're not seeing her.
That's okay.
We know who you are, but for some reason, it's not really working. Anna Margert in there. Uh, also, we have Commissioner Troy Kent from Zone 2.
Hey, Governor.
My left and Neil right is our Deputy Mayor on Zone 3 Commissioner Stephen Persis. Please to have back with us Commissioner Rob Littleton from Zone 4. Down in front is City Manager Joyce Shanahan, Assistant City Manager Claire Woodley, and, uh, for those of you listening online, I'm Mayor Bill Partington. At this time, if you would, please silence your cellphones and rise for the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Dear God, we thank you for the opportunity to come together this evening and do the business of the city of Ormond Beach. We hope that it is pleasing in your sight. We ask your blessing on our beautiful city, on the people who serve here in elected office, on the staff, and all the people who live here, and all the people who work here, and everyone who really cares about Ormond Beach and its future. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Agenda item 4 is the adoption of the fiscal year 2021-2022 millage rates and budget. I'll ask our City Clerk to please read the title.
Resolution Number 2021-157. A resolution adopting final millage rates to be levied for fiscal year 2021-2022, directing certification, expressing legislative intent, and setting forth an effective date. This is Resolution Number 2021-157, read by title only.
Thank you. Per Florida statute, I'm required to state that the millage rate for the city of Ormond Beach necessary to fund the fiscal year 2021-2022 budget is 3.9128 mils. This rate is 4.7% above the rollback rate of 3.7370 mils. The debt service millage rates are 0.0290 for the 2003 General Obligation Bond Sinking Fund and 0.0890 for the 2010 General Obligation Bond Sinking Fund. At this time, if there's any comments, uh, that anyone would like to add on the Commission regarding the tax rate and/or budget?
I move approval of Resolution Number 2021-157.
Hold on just one second for me. I'm sorry. Uh, this is a public hearing. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak or ask questions prior to adoption of the millage rate and budget? I don't have any cards, and so at this time, a motion and second would be appropriate.
I move approval of Resolution Number 2021-157.
Second.
Moved and seconded, and that includes the final operating millage rate of 3.9128 mils and the debt service millage rates of .0290 and .0890. I just needed to make sure that was in the motion. Is that correct? From the mover and from the second there?
Yes.
Great. Thank you. The final operating millage of 3.9128 mils is 4.7% above the rollback millage rate. The resolution also includes adoption of the debt service millage rates of 0.0290 for the 2003 General Obligation Bond Sinking Fund and 0.0890 for the 2010 General Obligation Bond Sinking Fund. Please call the vote.
Commissioner Selby.
No.
Commissioner Kent.
Yes.
Commissioner Persis.
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton.
Yes.
Mayor Partington.
Yes. The operating millage rate is set at 3.9128 mils, which is 4.7% above the rollback millage rate of 3.7370 mils. Please read 4B.
Ordinance Number 2021-31. An ordinance adopting the annual budget for the 2021-2022 fiscal year, beginning October 1, 2021, and ending September 30, 2022, repealing all inconsistent ordinances or parts thereof and setting forth an effective date. This is the second reading of Ordinance Number 2021-31, read by title only.
Thank you. I need a motion and a second for approval or discussion.
I move approval of Ordinance Number 2021-31.
Second the motion.
Very good. Any further discussion? Please call. Well, let me just bear with me, Wendy. This is so formalistic. Please call the vote to adopt the budget of $101,724,466.
Commissioner Kent.
Yes.
Commissioner Persis.
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton.
Yes.
Commissioner Selby.
No.
Mayor Partington.
Yes. Do I hear any objection to closing the public hearing? Hearing done. The public hearing is closed. Audience remarks. I have Bonda Garrison. Good evening.
Bonda Garrison, 365 Notting Hill Street, Ormond Beach. I'm here this evening representing the Ormond Beach Historical Society, and I'd like to tell the Commissioners and Mayor and all the citizens of Ormond Beach that we are launching our 16th Annual Speaker Series this Saturday. It's funded by a grant from the Florida Humanities Council, and all the programs, as always, are free to everyone. We have eight programs planned for this year. Uh, they're all being on, uh, generally the last Saturday of the month at 10:00. They run through May of 2022. We have historians, professors, authors, archaeologists from throughout the state of Florida coming here to educate and enlighten our citizens. Unfortunately, because of COVID, while we had planned to be back in person, uh, in, um, this year in September, we will be virtual. So everyone can find the link for this Saturday's program at ormanhistory.org. That's our website, ormanhistory.org. I also have paper schedules. I left copies for all the Commissioners, and there are more in the back of the room for people who are here today. We're also launching another free series that we're calling Sunday Symposias. These will be at 2:00 on Sundays, and the intent of these is to be more of a community discussion. The first two will be Vietnam veterans. That'll be on November the 14th to honor Veterans Day, and then we'll have one with Korean War veterans in January. So we invite all citizens to come to those as well. And, um, also tell everyone we're having an Oktoberfest. So for some fun, in addition to the education, that'll be October the 14th, and tickets for that also are on our website at ormanhistory.org. And I'd also like to say thank you to everyone, uh, on the Commission and the staff for the wonderful work that's going on in the McDonald House, and we're very excited to open that as a museum of Ormond Beach history, uh, in a few years. So thank you all.
Thank you, Bonda. Billy Joe Kaler.
My name is Billy Joe Kaler. I am the 2021 Chair of the Ormond Beach Chamber and Resident of Ormond Beach. As we all know, 2020 was a little challenging, and 2021, here at the Chamber, we started out too great, starting to get a little bit of a hiccup. But the Ormond Beach businesses have persevered, and they're open for business, and they are continuing to succeed. We want to thank you for your continued support, let you know we are continuing to move forward with our programs such as Economic Prosperity, Startup Grind, our Leadership Program, and we did give away $6,000 scholarships to area high school students this year for 2021. We appreciate the partnership that the city has with the Chamber, and we're looking forward to launching our newest program in 2022, which is a youth leadership program. We're partnering with the area high schools here in the area to put together a leadership class for them, which came out of, uh, the Class Project for our Leadership 17 class this year. Our visitor traffic has picked up compared to last year, although we are not back to our pre-COVID numbers. We have at least two inquiries on average for people wanting to move to our great city, and that doesn't even include people just calling and inquiring what our city has. So I just want to thank the Mayor, all the Commissioners, and the city employees for all their support of the Chamber. Thank you.
Thank you, Billy Joe. David Randall.
David Randall, 99 for Santhoma. I'm Vice President of the Ormond Beach Professional Firefighters and Chairman of our Firefighters' Pension Group. Good evening, Mayor Partington, City Commissioner, Ms. Shanahan. Thank you both for allowing me the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I want to thank you all for the role you've played in making our dream of two new fire engines a reality. They could not have come at a better time. They're the pride of Ormond Beach and the envy of the county. In my 15 years of service to the city of Ormond Beach, I've never felt more optimistic about my department's future, and I believe all of you, along with Chief Seavers, are the bank. Under Chief Seaver's leadership, we have made much-needed improvements to our frontline apparatus and our equipment. He has started new traditions that have helped build pride in our department. I feel, I feel there's just one last aspect that could use some attention. I'm talking about the longest four-letter word in the dictionary, pension. In 2014, our retirement benefits were reduced for all future members. This happened due to a reduction in the Florida Retirement Systems Plan. Most cities across the state followed their lead, and we were no exception. Since 2014, many of the departments in the surrounding area have seen those reductions first, and as it stands now, we sit at the very bottom when comparing neighboring departments and multiply percentage in a required to clarify. We even lag behind the first responders in our own city. Our police department has a 1% cost of living built into their pension, and we do not. With minimum wage hitting $15 an hour by 2026, and our firefighters' starting hourly rate just under $13, it is imperative that we have enticing benefits to continue to attract and maintain the high-quality candidates that we bring these to. None of these statements are made as criticism, but as things to consider as we continue to move forward together. Thank you.
Thank you. The approval of the minutes have been sent to the Commission for review, posted to the city's websites. Any additions, corrections, or deletions?
Move approval of the September 8, 2021 minutes.
Second that.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those like a sign, show those passing unanimously. And the consent agenda, does any, anyone wish to pull anything from the consent agenda? Just need a motion and a second.
I move approval of the consent agenda.
I second the motion.
Moved and seconded. Please call the vote.
Commissioner Persis.
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton.
Yes.
Commissioner Selby.
Yes.
Commissioner Kent.
Yes.
Mayor Partington.
Yes. And that would be the appropriate time to, uh, comment on any consent agenda items if you'd like to. Deputy Mayor Persis.
Yes, I'd just like to comment on 7C. I was really excited to see that, um, our city is going to get a tactical robot, and, um, most of it, I think, is going to be paid, or most of it, from the law enforcement fund. And, uh, that's just a wonderful thing that, that we have here, and I, I, I hope that when we finally get it, that you all will bring it in so we can see it up close. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? If not, we will move to 8A, and I'll open the public hearings, ask the clerk to read 8A by title, please.
Ordinance Number 2021-32. An ordinance amending Section 2-50 accessory uses of Article 3, General Regulations of Chapter 2, District and General Regulations of the Land Development Code of the City of Ormond Beach by amending the conditions for temporary or itinerant car washes and motorcycle washes by nonprofit entities, prohibiting temporary or itinerant car washes and motorcycle washes within the North U.S. Highway 1 Municipal Service Area and Joint Planning Area, prohibiting temporary or itinerant car washes and motorcycle washes throughout the city during recognized special events, repealing all inconsistent ordinances or parts thereof, providing for separability, and setting forth an effective date. This is the second reading of Ordinance Number 2021-32, read by title only.
Thank you, Wendy. I do have two cards, and we'll start with Dimitri Portzakis.
Uh, I'm Dimitri. I live in Ormond Beach on Millsap, and I also have a business and property on U.S. One Line. I own Dimitri's Bar Deck and Grill. I don't know if you're all familiar with it or not. I came here today, and I'm hearing some wonderful things that you guys are doing for the firefighters. Hopefully, they'll get that through for the Historical Society. That's awesome. Uh, and for your robot, is that a robot? Is that where I'm currently? That's awesome.
Tactical robot.
Very beautiful. Okay, so today, I'm here on a little bit of a heavy heart. Uh, for the last four, five, six years that I've had this bike wash, it has generated quite a bit of money to give to the wounded veterans. I know that we've made enough money to buy one of them a kidney and part of a house when he got done. So we're, all this money is being donated to something really charitable. This year, we're going, uh, for the children that are disabled. So this money that's generated is not for me, it's actually to help people out and to help people that are not as fortunate as the rest of us. I know we had a bad COVID year, uh, last year and this year. My business is not as great. I can't donate as much as I used to donate to them out of my own pocket, uh, which I hope to do some more. And now we're having a little problem, and I don't know what the big issue is, uh, for having a bike wash, uh, on the corner, if it's to move it back a little bit, or if the girls are being, uh, it's something I can regulate, but that brings a lot of income for people, uh, that are disabled, that need our help. And I don't want to stop doing that because of something that I could maybe, uh, grab and hold and control a little bit better on my end, if that's what the case may be. So I don't know how I can come and explain to you today that this is very needy, and it, it needs to be handled. I'm a giving person. I have a very big heart, and I like to give as much as possible. And taking this away, you're taking away thousands of dollars from these people that need it. Uh, like I said, I, I, I don't know why. I haven't been explained to why. I've tried to read most of the articles on why you're doing this, but if it's something that I can control on my end, uh, to make them a little bit more dressed up, I guess, I mean, it is a Bike Week, and if you don't want to do it during a special event, then, and do it on another time, that's not when the people are here. That's not when we can generate the money to make that kind of money, to be able to give them. So if you take it out of pocket, they're going to be suffering along. So that's the way I see it. Do I make money during that time? Obviously, because there's a half a million people there. But why shouldn't we be able to give them some of this money as well? So that's where I'm at with that. Hopefully, you hear me out. Thank you very much.
And Steve McMahon.
Dimitri put it well. I always come up here to ask questions, but I don't think there are any questions answered. What is the reason why Bike Washes are not going to be allowed?
Yeah, this isn't a question and answer. This is your three minutes to speak on the topic.
Yeah, that's right. Well, obviously, I got that, but I, I see zero good reason for it. Um, but Dimitri said, there's some things that can be changed, controlled, um, as far as stopping it. I mean, there's so many other things going on during Ormond Beach, during Bike Week, Bike Oktoberfest, and as far as I see, Bike Wash is the only thing that's being said allowed. Uh, I see no reason why they should be banned from during special events. Dimitri said everything else, but a lot of money is raised this year, it's for autistic kids, for a school. We, we raise money every year, and, uh, why y'all want to stop that is beyond me. Like I said, there's things that can be controlled and changed and allowed it. There's music, there's drinking, there's people all throughout Bike Week and Bike Oktoberfest, and why the Bike Wash is, where they're going to go, they're here for four days, 10 days, and the biggest thing is cleaning their bikes after a couple days. Now, they have no way to go do that. I had a lot of questions, but we'll wait to see what your answers. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. I don't have any more cards. I just need a motion and a second.
Move approval of Ordinance Number 2021-32.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Littleton.
No.
Commissioner Selby.
Yes.
Commissioner Kent.
Yes.
Commissioner Persis.
Yes.
Mayor Partington.
Yes. 8B.
Ordinance Number 2021-33. An ordinance amending Section 22-23 Minimum Meter Rates Generally, 22-24 Multiple Minimum Charges, and 22-71 Service Charge Established of Chapter 22, Water and Sewers, the City of Ormond Beach Code of Ordinances, by increasing the minimum water and sewer rates, repealing all inconsistent ordinances or parts thereof, and setting forth an effective date. This is the second reading of Ordinance Number 2021-33, read by title only.
Thank you. I don't have any cards. Just need a motion and a second.
I move approval of... Go ahead.
I'll just, just, I'll make the motion. Move approval.
Second.
Second.
Moved and seconded. No problem. Um, any discussion on 8B?
Yes, Mayor.
Commissioner Selby.
Thank you. Uh, yeah, I'm going to vote no on this, um, for the reasons that I've stated a couple of times at earlier meetings. We're using, uh, the American Rescue Plan money. It's, uh, $4.9 million, uh, to pay for, uh, what I would call ordinary and customary, uh, repairs and improvements to the, um, water and wastewater system, instead of using that for something that would be generational, like, you know, beginning the process of, uh, eliminating any reuse water going into the Halifax River. We pump, uh, 1.47, 1,470,000 gallons of reclaimed water into the Halifax River on average every day year-round. That's, uh, over 500 million gallons of reclaimed water going into the Halifax. And so for that reason, I'm going to vote against this.
Anyone else?
Yes, Mayor. I'll also be voting against, uh, this ordinance for several reasons Commissioner Selby mentioned.
Please call the vote.
Commissioner Selby.
No.
Commissioner Kent.
Yes.
Commissioner Persis.
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton.
No.
Mayor Partington.
Yes. 8C.
Ordinance Number 2021-35. An ordinance amending Chapter 2, District and General Regulations, Article 3, General Regulations, Section 2-50 accessory uses of the Land Development Code to allow mobile food dispensing vehicles, food trucks, at single-family and multifamily developments with a residential clubhouse or community center, repealing all inconsistent ordinances or parts thereof, providing for separability, and setting forth an effective date. This is the first reading of Ordinance Number 2021-35, read by title only.
Thank you, and I'll ask our Planning Director, Stevens Breaker, to speak on this.
Good evening, Stevens Breaker, Planning Director. If you recall, as we went through the food truck ordinance a few months ago, I'm at the planning board, there was a request to allow multifamily developments and single-family to have food trucks at their clubhouses. So this amendment trailed, um, those two, and basically what the goal is, is to allow it, um, for both single-family and multifamily developments that have a clubhouse. Um, the regulations and the operations are all contained in the previous amendment. Uh, staff selected a, a member of 12 days per calendar year. We can monitor that. If it's not appropriate, we can adjust it, um, in the future. Staff is recommending approval, and the planning board also recommended approval.
Thank you. Any questions for Deputy Mayor Persis?
Steve, I just wanted to ask, how will you monitor that? Like, you just said that. Could you give me an example?
They'll be, um, so they'll be required to do a nonprofit special event permit. So basically, they'll, they'll apply for a permit. There's no cost to the permit, but basically, they'll register, you know, where the food trucks are going to be, um, how they'll be set up. So all the, all the, uh, organizational criteria that are in the existing, uh, under the permit seminal requirements and the permit timeframes, those will all still be in effect. It just, in essence, allows it for multifamily and single-family. So if we, if somebody does it without a permit, code enforcement will go out and basically tell them, hey, you need a permit, and then if they keep doing it, they, they would be fined.
Okay. Thank you.
I have one. Mr. Spraker, the Trails has been doing this, uh, a few times already, and I think they were the genesis of this, um, coming before us. Have you received any complaints from people in the Trails or about, about this?
Not a one.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, Steve. I don't have any cards. Just need a motion and a second.
A move for approval, ordinance Number 2021-35.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Please call the vote on 8C.
Commissioner Kent.
Yes.
Commissioner Persis.
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton.
Yes.
Commissioner Selby.
Yes.
Mayor Partington.
Yes, and we will close the public hearings and move to 9A.
Ordinance Number 2021-34. An ordinance amending Chapter 10, Solid Waste, Yard Waste and Recyclables, Section 10-16, Fees for Collection and Disposal Established of the Code of Ordinances, by increasing fees for the collection and disposal of solid waste, repealing all inconsistent ordinances or parts thereof, setting forth an effective date. This is the second reading of Ordinance Number 2021-34, read by title only.
I don't have any cards.
Move approval.
Second.
Any discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Persis.
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton.
Yes.
Commissioner Selby.
Yes.
Commissioner Kent.
Yes.
And Mayor Partington.
Yes. Reports, suggestions, and requests, and tonight, we start with City Manager Joyce Shanahan.
Good evening. First of all, I want to remind you that we're going to have a workshop on October 5th for, um, FDOT Transportation, A1A and Yover Road. Um, FDOT will be here, um, and make the presentation, so we're excited about that. Once they share that information with you, then they'll go back out to the public and see public comment on that, and then they'll move forward. Just a reminder, those are state roadways, so we really appreciate them partnering with us and working with us to get something that's acceptable to the Commission and to our community. So they're working hard on that. I'd like to report that FPL has just completed installation of 16 new streetlights along U.S. 1 between Airport Road and Wall Street at the request of our Police Department and the Volusia County Sheriff's Department. This will provide much-needed, uh, lighting to increase safety in that area, especially during special events. Uh, it was initiated on behalf of ODPD and Volusia County Sheriff, and, uh, FPL staff worked diligently to get that done before Bike Week, so we're excited about that. The cost to the city is the electric bill for the lights, so I just wanted to let you know about that. Also, the state of the city is on October 12th at 12:00 noon, so that's coming Also, the State of the City is on October 12th at 12:00 noon, so that's coming up. That's at Oceanside Country Club. It is sponsored by the Ormond Beach Chamber. They put it on and then we do a presentation and everybody's there. Hopefully it'll be a good year to report for what we're doing. I don't have any other specific comments. I provided my report. I think we didn't do it this time. We do it at the end of the month. So if you have any questions about anything, we're trying to stay on, on time for these workshops. We've got a number of them scheduled and staff has been meeting internally to do about, to prepare for the Obi Life series of workshops that will begin on October 26th. I think we're coming with Obi Life Westward Focus, so that it's a little bit broader picture, but we're focusing on what's happening at Ormond. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those.
Any questions for the City Manager?
Just briefly. And not really a question, more of just a comment. I wanted you to know, I wasn't being rude while you were talking, but I'm a good student and do my homework like I'm supposed to. And two days ago, my good reader was on my iPad. Exactly. So I opened up my iPad and I said, where's, where's my information? But thank goodness, I had memorized everything I wanted to talk about. So before our new IT manager left Ms. Shanahan, I wanted to go get him. But I, I just want to tell you how good Wendy is. She sees me leave and is like right there. And before I opened my mouth, she said, "Good Reader?" And I was like, "You know what it is." So I wasn't being rude. I was, I was multitasking and listening to all of your comments at the same time, but I felt like this got hijacked or something and...
Well, I apologize for that.
It's okay. I mean, it's...
I had the same experience when I sat down here.
Alan knows the fix, so he thinks. So that's, that's a good thing. So it wasn't, it wasn't a question. It was just basically a comment to tell you why I, why I bailed on your first comment.
We, we could have, you know, held the meeting, but it would have taken longer to reload that on everybody's machine. So note to self, don't update that software before a meeting. So we apologize for that.
And Assistant City Manager Claire Whitman.
No further comments. Thank you.
Deputy City Attorney Anne Margaret Emery.
No comments. Thank you.
And tonight we start with Commissioner Littleton.
Thank you, Mayor. It is nice to be back. I do want to thank staff and this commission for being so accommodating for me during my time out. And I thank it, thank you very much and appreciate it very much. With that, I'll say good night.
Thank you. And Commissioner Selby.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of quick comments. First of all, Rob, great to have you back in person. You were actually never gone. You just were on the screen. There's a little head in the corner up there. And just wanted to say the Celtic Festival was a huge success. When I went there Saturday morning, if you all recall, on the 11th, the weather was awful, right? The park was packed. I mean, these, you know, and then I'm thinking, well, these are Scottish people, right? I mean, they're, they're tough, right? They're used to that kind of weather. It's, makes them feel at home. And we did a real nice remembrance of 9/11. And then also on the morning, we did the walk over the bridge and that was very well attended and a lot of the public were here and it was really, I think it, you know, it was great for us to do that, but I think it really meant a lot to the firefighters that we have and the police, but primarily the firefighters. And there were county firefighters along with our firefighters and maybe some from other cities also. I'm not sure. But anyway, that was, those were both great events. Thank you and good night.
Thank you. Commissioner Kent.
Yes. Commissioner Selby, I know you won't give it up, but man, I, I want to steal that part of your zone where Publix is coming in. It looks beautiful and I am, listen, I'm, I'm an Aldi shopper. I'll just, let me get that out there right now so everybody knows. But we can't beat, in our area, Publix's Bakery and Deli. But I'm super excited about that store opening and what a wonderful addition to our community it will be. And it looks, it looks great. And as I drive by, I just, every time I look at it, I think, you know what? Everything Publix touches is first class. They, they just do it right every single time. And Publix, welcome, welcome to the beachside again, to Ormond Beach. The Ormond Memorial Art Museum is just coming along. It is just changing every single day. You drive by at night, you see Electric is inside the building at night. They've got it lit up and they are working away, so I'm, I'm super excited about that addition to my zone. And then just, just two last ones. Joe Daniels, you have been a longtime educator and a longtime supporter of your city and thank you for making the effort to come here. It's appreciated by, by many and especially by me. And, and last but not least, honestly, to, to one of the absolute best in the business I've ever had the pleasure to work with. And I believe he should be teaching school resource officers how to be a school resource officer. Gregory Stokes in, in the back of the room, we've got real love for you and you're amazing at what you do, not just at the school, but in our community. And Commission, you should sit down with Greg sometime and talk to him about how he and Stretch keep the South Ormond Neighborhood Center level and good behaviors there and good activities there. It's powerful and it's heartwarming and it's appreciated. Have a good night.
Thank you. Commissioner and Deputy Mayor Persis.
Good evening, everyone, again. I want to start, I guess I'm hungry because I want to start off talking about food. We have a new restaurant and Troy, I want to steal your thunder, but I don't know if you've been to Del Mar, the new, the new Italian chop house that, it's where the old Bonefish was and they opened, I guess, a week or so ago and it's really good. It's very open, great menu, something for everyone. So be sure to try that out. It's a great, great place. I had the opportunity to go to the Celtic Festival on Sunday when it wasn't raining. It was a lot of people there. They had great food. It was just, and most of the people there, I think, really are from out of town. I really, I didn't see many people, you know, regulars, I don't think, but it seemed like it's a real popular venue for out-of-towners to come here and go. I will have to tell on myself though, because I decided I was going to throw axes and I thought, oh, I can do that. That doesn't look very hard. Well, I almost got one and I think I threw 10 and one almost stuck and then fell out and I said, "I'm quitting now." It's like, quit. But it was fun to try. Because those axes are heavy. You don't realize they're, they're quite as heavy as they are. And then I just also want to say something about the September 11th event that the city put on. It was just absolutely fabulous and I think we all, all that were there, you know, we thought back where we were and how we felt and we felt that way again on, on that morning and it was just a fabulous, fabulous celebration. So I just want to thank the city for, for doing that. It was just perfect. And lastly, the push-in ceremony for our two new fire trucks at Station 92 WOW. And they, yes, they are the envy of everybody. Everyone keeps talking about them. They're just absolutely beautiful. And I'm so glad that our firefighters have great equipment in which to do their job. And that's very important to me, whether it's a firefighter or a police officer. I think you need to have the best equipment so you can do your job to the best of your ability. I hope everybody stays safe. Thank you and have a good evening.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I don't have a lot tonight. I got a call last week letting me know that Ormond Beach had been selected to receive a $2.3 million grant for the airport, which we got the official notification, I think it was just yesterday. I think that's fantastic. Those are dollars that our taxpayers will not see come out of the general fund for those needed projects, rehabbing a couple of the taxiways out there. And I thought it was interesting that when those dollars come in, because of how government accounting is done, and I'm not an accountant by any means and certainly not a government accountant, and that's a whole different set of standards that you have to know. But people will run around saying that the airport fund owes half a million dollars. But then when you get a $2.3 million grant, I guess the general fund doesn't owe the airport fund $1.8 million when you subtract the half million. Doesn't really work that way in the, in the accounting scheme of things. But for a very small amount of dollars every year, we're able to leverage those and do some incredible projects out there. And I think that's the point that people miss when it comes to the economic impacts that our airport has. And that's, that economic impact that our airport produces is not a widely publicized number. We probably don't do a good enough job of explaining the jobs that that creates and the other economic impacts that occur in our city as a result of having an airport. So just wanted to, to point that out. It's a substantial amount of money. It was a quick turnaround. We had already approved receiving it at our last meeting and then luckily it, it came through, so that's a positive. As far as budget season, we just wrapped up another budget season tonight, set our, set our millage rate. It's, some people consider it next to Christmas, the most wonderful time of the year, the entire, the budget season. But we had a pretty smooth, pretty smooth process. I think there was some back and forth, which is always good. Our population right now is probably around, well, World Population Review estimates it at about 44,591 people in Ormond Beach. I heard from two people who weren't happy with the budget. One was Joe Anoush, who spoke last meeting, and the other one, I got an email. And so to have a budget process that flows that smoothly, I think speaks to the quality of the work that Joyce and all her staff, Kelly, put in and the amount of effort. That's why your award-winning budgets, year after year after year, shine through. So I was pleased with that. And just to kind of put it in a little perspective, I talked to somebody last week who moved to Ormond Beach from Daytona Beach. They bought a more expensive house and their taxes were quite a bit less than what they had been paying in Daytona Beach. So they were thrilled. They couldn't understand why anybody would have an issue with Ormond Beach taxes. And I was happy to hear that, hear that real-life story. So that's the kind of thing that when you look at the millage rates and see where we are compared to other cities, you realize the value that you're getting for your dollar and our staff strives really hard to make that happen. And we, as a commission, pushed them to do that, so. As far as the ARPA dollars, how we spent those, we did that in such a smart way, in such an efficient way compared to so many other commissions throughout the state and probably around the, around the country. I didn't hear from anybody in the public on how we spent our ARPA dollars. I don't recall receiving one email. I don't recall one person coming to the podium. But that again was a little part of the budget process, but I just thought that was important to note. And then finally, the push-in ceremony was fantastic. Chief, you guys and gals put together an amazing event with the big screen showing how those trucks were constructed from the ground up, exactly how your team of people who designed and advised how they wanted them built, had them built. That was amazing. And then just seeing the two beautiful trucks and not only our residents who came out, but our firefighters on and off duty, who I talked to, were so pleased with the equipment, the ability it gives them to work more efficiently and safely. And it, you know, when you look at simple things like where a hose is located or how you grab a ladder, things that can prevent injuries, our firefighters designed those trucks in ways to, to help them avoid those injuries. Even just something as simple as the, the air ride that those trucks have compared to a truck that's 20 years older. So much smoother in talking to the, the line firefighters that are in those things day in and day out. So I'm really excited about that. I know our, our folks are as well. And as part of the budget process, just tying it back to that, we now have a dedicated millage to a fund that makes sure we can replace those trucks at a normal interval, whether it's 10 years, 12 years, whatever, kind of whatever the best practices are, but, and provide other equipment for, for police and for public works as well. There's, those dollars will be there because we had the foresight to create a fund that will make sure, make sure they're there. With that, we will be adjourned. Thank you all.